Order at seven oh one to this town council meeting on January tenth, twenty twenty three. I plead right for pledge of allegiance and my respects.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the first place.
Thank you everyone, please seated. That brings us to proclamations and presentations which we have done. Brings us to item by public petitions, communications and public participation on any subject within the town jurisdiction of the town council with a two minute limit. If you were on Zoom, you can get the raise hand function or star nine. And here in the audience, you can approach the table and state your name and address. Looks like we have Clodette Morehouse. I can raise first.
Good evening, everybody. Clodette Morehouse, eighty-nine Merlot Way, Tallinn. I just have a few comments and questions regarding the contaminated wells. Was just wondering why residents weren't considered to be part of this task force. It just seems to be one sided. It's all, you know, town council, town employees and your attorney. No one's representing the people in this task force. And it's if you wanted trust and transparency, you know, maybe that should be considered. The consultant that was hired, where's the report? Is he done with it? I haven't seen anything. And will it be shared, you know, with the public? Town manager apparently spoke to Senator Murphy back in July. And he knew back then that we weren't getting this grant. This info was not shared with us, at least the residents involved, so. What was the big push for this hearing? Apparently, if the town knew about it, he consulted town council. Apparently Tammy must have known about it, but the horns were sounding about this hearing that was supposed to be so important for a grant.
Those are two different grants, Ms. Morehouse. The federal one and the state one, those are two different grants. The state one you're still involved in, and I think will have a positive outcome in your estimation.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. This information is all given to me like secondhand and I don't understand why the town isn't being forthcoming with this information. So that we have a little bit of reassurance for transparency when we're living this nightmare every day. And it just seems like, you know, we're being thrown bones here and there and we have no recourse. You know, we're at the town's mercy, basically.
So the omnibus, if I can jump in.
Yeah, we just did the two minute, but obviously if there's anything else.
The omnibus bill was a federal bill that started long before I got here. And my second weekend, I met with Senator Murphy and some of his people. And that was basically framed up for projects that were ready to go, that had plans, that had the costs, all that framed out and to jump on. And obviously, we were nowhere near that at that point. So that's separate from the state one that is still active. Representative Nuccio has been pushing hard and following that. And I've been in communication with her. But again, that's on the state side. Thanks.
So if that was on the state side and that one's still active, there's still a question why no one from the town showed up in our defense to plead our case for that grant.
I provided you with an answer today, ma'am.
Well, thank you for your time and I hope that moving forward that with this task force that residents could be involved in it. I mean, we have lived it for seven years and we're no better off now than we were when we started. And we have a lot of input to give to this task force. And, you know, if you want to represent the people, then have the people on this task force as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Clodette. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on council items or in the chair of the council? All right, going once. Going twice. Item six, public hearing item we have done. So seven A is reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Item seven, eight dot one is the ARPA subcommittee. And we've in the packet, there is an update from the ARPA subcommittee spreadsheet that lists out the projects that are discussed as a twelve thirty-one twenty-two. So we have two, two out of four members of the ARPA subcommittee. Either one, if you want to write a rundown and any other ones.
Go on, Brian, can throw in the blanks. I don't know if you want to throw up this spreadsheet on here if people were to look at the screen.
I have the ability to do that.
If not, that's fine.
In the packet.
Okay. All right. So we just thought it might be a good idea since it's been a little bit over a year since the subcommittee was officially voted on. And these are just some quick numbers and facts what we've been working on. In the packet, you can see that we have basically three categories and we get suggestions from either the public, town or counselors themselves. And then we put them into either we voted on them officially or they're still pending or no longer under consideration. This is what we hear Tammy and I will call it to our tracker. That's what we follow. I think the committee has been really running really well. There's really good finance person on it. Lisa does a fabulous job as the finance person and Brian, he does a great job because if there's any questions, he'll go to the departments or the ex or whoever it is has the inquiry and reaches out to them and reports back to the subcommittee. Then I also want to say the amount most people probably know, we, the town received four million, three hundred and twenty-six dollars in two hundred, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and five dollars and sixty-two cents. To date, we have used one point, one million, five hundred and seventy-four, two hundred and forty-one. So we're being very conservative on how we're spending it. We still have a lot of stuff that's still pending in this spreadsheet. There will be two things coming possibly to the council that has to do with capital items that the subcommittee did vote on, but I don't think Brian's ready. I think he wants to wait a little bit.
Well, that'll come through with the capital stuff.
Yeah. And I think that's really, I'll give a good example what Brian does. We had the fire truck on there. And then he said, let's wait a little bit before we get more information, which was great. That's one way of being fiscal responsible on that. And then public works trucks, there was two on there that Brian wants to do a little bit more research on, to see if we probably need those trucks right now. They can wait a little bit longer and if they need them, then we're just gonna discuss that again.
Something else too, like if a ball, the baseball wants stuff, so I'll try to get DPW to chip away at the list before we start looking at how much money that we can, we can spend on it. And anything, you know, typically when stuff comes up from different organizations, we try to have, if we can handle some of the smaller items first, then that's, that's, we're taking a conservative approach, watching other cities and towns around the state. Well, I want to catch stone, but other cities, but we're being fairly conservative in our approach to make sure that we're not doing it haphazardly. We're not doing it for political reasons. We're doing it for the best fiscal and financial interest of the town. And Lisa is obviously helping a lot with the framework of that.
So that's it really in a nutshell. I don't know if you have any questions for Brian and I, what we've done or if we are happy with the subcommittee that we formed.
Is the first question is what do you receiving the top items or trends for twenty twenty-three for potential expenditures? Do you think it'll continue to be capital related expenditures?
For the, for the bigger ones, yeah, but I also think there's opportunity at some of the smaller items that'll, that'll have an impact on, I don't want to say morale in town, but like hitting off the softball and in the little league boys, both sides, I think is a good move and not a huge, not a massive amount. And working with people on that stuff is great. And, you know, Lisa really starts to crush the numbers. What is the best way to spend this money so that we can really protect our financial structure and tax basis financially? So she's, she's very, very cognitive of that and, and that's our approach.
And I know long term, one of your top goals, maybe you've discussed a few times, wanting to get accessibility on the green and one that we've thought about several times.
And we have plenty of room for that, looking at what happened at Crossbars. And as you saw with the, some of the estimates that we had estimated two hundred thousand and spent ninety. So when does that happen in town government? So that's great that we, we literally spent less than half of what we had estimated the cost to be. So good job with, by DPW and our contractors and our folks here in town to really, it looks great. It came out great. And it committed a half the cost. So we'll have plenty of room if we decide to move forward with something along the green. The increased accessibility, ADI on the green, we'll have, we should have funding for that. And I've been getting the, the approach of that, which is, you don't want to rush it.
Yeah. And then for the recreation, I've heard so far good things about the, the discounts and stuff, a boost for, for them. If it works out well enough, would we consider if you have the time to use it to do another round of discounted programs?
That it's something to consider. And it's actually timely with today, today's meeting too, that the programs are going to increase. So we'll like, you know, it's nice to hopefully, depending on your decisions, we'll have more staff in recreation to assist with that. But that was, that was, that was some of the things that I say are great for town, to the town as a whole, morale wise. I hate to use that word, but it's good for everybody.
Okay. I think that's it for me for now. If anybody else had any questions.
I'm sorry about that. I just wanted to add one more thing that all the money needs to be allocated by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four and be extended by twelve thirty-one twenty-six. So we only have a couple more years on there to work.
Three years, I think that you want me to spend it, I can spend. No, that's okay. I think Mr. Chair, that I, I think it's, it's a great thing that, that everyone on the, on the committee has been doing. I mean, I really commend you all that it's something that, you know, when the money first came in, that everybody was screaming for it. And it's, I mean, there was a lot of people that were looking for, for funding and looking for things and a lot of big asks for funding. And I think that it was a, you all have done an incredible job going through it, identifying the real needs and the real impact of the town. So I think that's great. One of the things that I would also agree with along with Mr. Chair is, you know, any of the low hanging fruit, things that, you know, that may not be a, be a big cost, but may have a big impact. Along with what Ms. Foley said, I think that that's, that's something that I think that would go a long way. Because, you know, everyone likes big projects, but it doesn't, you know, that it's the smaller ones that have more personal impact on it. So. But I just want to say thank you all for what you're doing.
I concur. And actually, one other question, I believe, is the forestry management project still on the list? I skipped through and saw it. If there's any.
The conversation over there talking.
I know, right? Yeah, because I don't know at some point, because we're not really involved with sustainable CT anymore. I don't know what the conservation commission and the lot of subcommittee is going to do for allocating additional funds for phases three and four in terms of fundraising, but that might just be something to keep in the radar.
I'm pretty sure.
I don't see it on the offs.
It might still be pending. What do you see? Well, you know, I just found it. It's on page three of the.
Yeah, I thought it was still on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. But not necessarily speaking for the conservation commission, but knowing they're doing stuff for a lot of it and a lot of it's been volunteer work. And I know in the past, when we had additional budget funds under the last council, we helped provide a little extra money to help patch things away. It might be good to keep them in the loop and maybe reach out to other organizations that might be looking for long-term projects. You know, Veterans Recognition Commission with the Veterans Wall, you know, if that's a potential capital item that could then be worked on and you go as ARPA plans to help improve the green in tandem with the sidewalks. It might just be good to bring every group into the fold as well as all the town departments that are looking to improve their.
I did meet with Vern on the green by their, their monument there and discuss some things. He is in the, he wants to talk it over with his commission with some ideas and ensure that he will assure me that he.
Yeah, or even adding accessibility and moving space for the, the veterans area.
Oh, and at Randle's?
Yeah, okay.
No worries.
Are there any other questions for colleague or councilman, Eva Jack or town manager Foley?
Then Lisa would be here, but she's on vacation.
Well, it's a well-earned vacation. He works very hard for the ARPA committee and everything. All right, that brings us to item seven B, which is reports of town council liaisons. Start by left, Councilor.
Nothing happened in the last two weeks, but things start to really pick up now that year's rolling, so.
Councilor.
The danger of work.
All right. For me, I had library foundation last night. They had a really good meeting. We talked a little bit about the fundraiser that I had early at the end of the year. They were happy about that and talking about future ventures. They got an update about there's a state for IV when Panophs that is going on. They're going to probate, but that should be a source of revenue for them at some point in the near future. They discussed their spending policies. They approved a few spending requests for the library director. A frame for a picture for a, we've artwork and reading look at the library. They've been more work, I think, updating the cabinets and the conference room that's used as like an additional space. And they had found some historical documents for the historical society to update those. And trying to think if there was anything else. They had universal class description for one thousand renewal. And they're going to be installing a dedicated computer in the lectern in the program at the library so that guests and other people who use it can hard write into rent the different girl, guest laptop to use the projector screen. So that should be forthcoming, but take a little while, but. And then conservation commission is meeting on Thursday. They will be doing their forestry management project update. They're gonna discuss the hiking registration forms, which they have been seeking out David Corcoran for any legal opinions or well, kind of turning it through David Corcoran for legal opinions regarding liability for injury on the trails for conservation events. And then next Wednesday, is that right, Lisa? Next Wednesday is water commission. And then, yep, next Wednesday will be the water commission meeting. And that's it for me.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, that I was unable to attend any of the subcommittee or any of the other meetings for the various committees that I, that we do have. The, we did actually have for the Veterans Recognition Commission that they had a copy house this today. And that we have another night out over at at the spot later on, later on this week. And I know that there's a few other things that are coming up. I would just say check the VRC site and that's all I have at this point.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilor.
Sure. So I was unable to attend the call on recreation advisory board last night because I was at another meeting, but touched on a little earlier, but the office money that they receive is doing quite well in that recreation department. Most of their programs are full. It looks like he gave some examples, like his shake it up fitness class had thirty-two participants in it, which is really great. And then his basketball registration, they had over a hundred participants. So just an idea of they're really filling up and that's really great. They also, it looks like we appointed their board positions for the new year. And next month, they're going to be invited to different clubs and town organizations to hopefully go over their field usage and things like that. Anything more, I can refer to them in minutes. And again, Bruce is excellent. Next, John and I attended the mental health task force meeting last night that was held at the church here on the green in person to go over the first part of the results from the survey that was done for mental health that done by Reil and consultants. And we will have second one finishing up that a next meeting in two weeks. But there's a lot of good data that come, came from it. There's three hundred and eighty-eight residents that did it and some of their results, they were surprised. We thought, I can give you, I just got the PowerPoint. If you want to know any particular things on it or just wait till it's all done and it comes out. It was hard to take minutes because it was pretty much.
I'd be curious what the highlights were.
If you don't mind me like going back and forth on this presentation. I think they were most surprised about what, how, so this, that should start to, the survey was for eighteen and over. It didn't include youth in this. So most of the population was concerned about recent drugs like opioids. Well, they think they're surprised at that because they thought it would be some other things. But they're thinking the town, the parliament had thought it was included opioids in it. They thought that people concerned about our town with cocaine and heroin was in what they found from state statistics. So they're, they're surprised by that. And the other one was alcohol and marijuana and and then some other things as far as mental health. One of the things that we kind of pulled away from it is that people don't really know where to go in Tallinn. So that was one of the things we're going to be working on the next meeting, how to get that information across and let's see, I'll probably slate people concerned in Tallinn about anxiety is high with teens and adults. And there was concern about depression and suicide in that town. Which they were sort of surprised on the suicide one because there's not compared to other towns, there's not as many, but I think any one or two is enough in our town. So I think that was well known anxiety and depression could lead to that. So it was really good.
Yeah.
I mean, eventually that will come out and you can go get into it and ask John and I questions. He was supposed to report tonight.
He's on his way. I just, I just got a message that he's on his way.
But I think that's it, that I really can.
Okay.
But I think it was worth the ten thousand dollars that the subcommittee and the council approved for.
What, what funds do we use to approve it? Was it?
I think originally we thought it would cost up to forty thousand dollars and it costed ten. So big difference. Yeah.
Do you think bringing in a hell of a task force is in existence that they might want to do a subsequent one? Like again, way back to ARPA, if we have the funds for but, you know, mixed updated survey to create some longitudinal data might be beneficial.
They might. They were very thorough because the first part of the presentation was the surrounding towns and the durs and even, you know, accidents on the highway. Of course, we have a lot more because we have eighty-four and stuff, but it was really impressive. All the information they had. So it was, it was a good, good meeting.
The survey methodology isn't statistically applicable. So longitudinal work can be done, but it's more qualitative than a quantitative, just based on the survey methodology.
And also because the population is going to shift, you know, people that respond when you're, might be able to respond or.
No, that, that wouldn't be a longitudinal concern for methodology, but.
Well, I don't think it would for additional.
It's much more expensive to run in a sample, you know, a statistically valid sample survey, ten thousand dollars. You know, that's never going to be.
Maureen was the one that was, and that was great. John asked a great, a great question because three hundred and eighty-eight surveys is great for our town. And he thought, he asked, is this enough information to give us real data for our town? They said, yes. So it was a great question. He had so.
But it's not a representative. Because.
No, but, but it will help, I think.
Yes, absolutely.
But the recommendations, which are.
Absolutely. Great, great quantitative information.
But I think that's pretty much it.
I'm sorry.
If you want, when we meet down with mental health task force, if you want them to come here and give like the full presentation, it's good.
Yeah.
I mean, they were very, Dr. Willett was there, which is great because they went over a few years ago, the students did a survey. I always think that the students aren't always honest in those surveys. Right? So it was actually a little similar to how the adults as far as certain things.
Yeah, there's the level of honesty and level of willing to put yourself out there.
Right.
Seriously.
They think they might be able to be tracked, you know what I mean? Like things like that. So. But yeah, I think maybe that is an idea, have them come here and Dr. Emma Duke and Jacob will do a good job.
And actually, one other update I forgot to include under seven A for reports and boards and committees responsible to the council is the firehouse subcommittee will be meeting next Thursday at nineteen, that four thirty. I believe they got paperwork done, Brian, is that correct?
Yeah, we had a great pre-construction meeting. Everybody was there and from permits to the fire marshal to the chief. Megan did an excellent job. I have great confidence in the contractor and where I'm happy to have it. A lot of mutual friends in connection to the town here. So high confidence, consume their history and their approach thus far and their knowledge, obviously going through the meeting was, they're very experienced. So they also understand the public safety impacts and the leap of faith we're putting in them. So like how.
And Megan's been good so far in her.
Unbelievable. Yep. A ten out of ten in regards to work ethic and understanding and growing and learning the, the role.
That is.
How convenient, John.
No worries, John. We'll let you get settled in and I'm gonna pitch you the last seat. No, we were just finishing up reports of town council liaison. So we'll give you a moment once you're settled in. If you have anything you want to report, but don't rush.
We're all gonna look.
You're all gonna look at you while we wait.
You were supposed to report on the mental health task force and then all of a sudden you appeared after I finished.
Thanks, John. It was everything. I've been shitting for me. It's gonna be my turn to pinch you. PCC did me last night, except I wasn't able to make it because I was at the other meeting.
Yeah. And they had their signage, public hearing still.
Yes.
Yeah. That's it. Sounds good. Thank you. So that brings us to item eight, new business. Eight point one is a consideration of resolution establishing the road salt task force consisting of two town council members, a town manager, the director of the ministry of services and the town attorney to investigate and make recommendations to the town council regarding the potential impact of road salt on residential well water. Unfortunately, due to the potential conflicts of interest and recommendation of manager's office and town attorney, I'll recuse myself in this discussion. But my sure reading will take over the helm and I'll return once we get to eight point two. So just shoot me a quick text when you guys are all set.
Very good. Great. So Ryan, can we just give a quick summary of this?
Yep. As you know, our town attorney, Attorney Richard Conti retained a consultant to assist him in the ongoing well, salt, sodium and chemicals in the well water here in Tallinn. Council expressed an interest to be informed in it. He suggested this ad hoc committee and having two council members come to each meeting so you can make decisions and be well informed when you do so.
Good, very good. I mean, this has been an ongoing issue for some of our residents for
Seven years.
Quite, yeah, quite a few years now. So I think this is a step that makes sense. And is there anybody who would like to make a motion that's laid out in eight point one?
I won't make that motion.
A second. Any discussion? Just, just with regard to this, I mean, we've heard some of the, some of the town members, including Ms. Morehouse stating that, questioning why there's no residents that are included as part of this, part of this subcommittee or part of this task force. And I think, I think it's a valid question. I think I know the answer already. But I just wanted to make sure that that's something, you know, as far as why was that discussed in, you know, in my estimation, just, just knowing about what's going on is that a lot of it would have to do with, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Foley, that regarding there's a potential of discussion of litigation and issues that it might have have to do with litigation that if it goes forward, we're not able to accurately or adequately address the issue, that that could create something. And that's why at this point, there's no residents being included. Is that, is that accurate or was there any discussion regard with Trudy Conti regarding including town members?
Of course. And that's exactly, that was the recommendation and outcome that it protected best interest of the town of all.
And at some point in time, is it contemplated that the task force, after getting through some of the, some of the more touchy issues would be able to invite. The task force after getting through some of the uh some of the more touchy issues would be able to uh invite. The uh invite members of the of the residents of the town. Participate or at least have a speaking session with them. Is that something that that might be considered?
Short order. That that's I believe that's on the the. In the next few weeks that that's going to occur. Well, they'll present here as well to keep everybody informed. Yes.
Yeah, that's a.
Oh, no, that's okay. I'll I'll yield the floor.
Sorry, Lou, John. Um. I was gonna say those are welcome to the committee. It's not a closed door. Something. Except that meetings, if anybody can come, I would think it's the. Be a zone two, so.
What is that?
Me like ad hoc meetings.
I'm not I'm not sure about that, that the 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 the. Consultant will come to council, I believe, and present to the council as a whole publicly. I think that was the intent so that everyone can see. Uh what they've done and their and their report.
You're talking about any any?
I just assume like I would figure that in ad hoc, like a meeting like of our committee or whatever means we're on. That anybody can at least.
I don't know. I'll get you that answer though.
Okay.
My guess is that the um task force might go into executive session.
If it is, right.
To discuss confidential matter.
Mislead anybody.
Yeah, so yes, I think I would guess that you're right, but it might. The um. A lot of the discussions happen in executive session. Due to the. Evil issues.
Yeah, and I I think I'm sorry, we I mean, we're going into an open discussion everybody now, but I think that that's something. Um I think that's right is where. You know, that. This is a task force for the town to take a look at it. It's not that we're intentionally excluding people, but there's a lot of issues. That that um that could touch touch on town uh town concerns. And so it's at that point where once we identify those. And trying to uh find various ways ahead. That we then then we could include the residents and getting everybody, but it's a matter of us figuring out some of the uh courses of action.
I agree. This has been going on for, as I've told, uh seven years and um. I I'm I have the frustrations laid at my feet um almost daily and and I completely empathize and that's. Um just when I'm dealing with a family member who has this the the same water issue, so uh I get it and and uh. I personally, as a result of all that, am trying to push it as fast as I can, but also as responsibly. Uh as I can, and this is a this is a good step forward in keeping everybody uh my council informed as to the uh. Uh what the uh consultant and attorney have do.
Yeah, I'm thank you. I I would uh. Incur that I think. This needs to start, like this task force should start meeting as soon as possible.
Yep.
Um because our residents have been waiting too long.
Mike, do you have anything to add?
No, I just um. Nope, um I I agree with Katie. We we're gonna move forward as soon as we can once we get uh people that council members appointed.
Okay, so from a procedural standpoint, we're gonna vote on this and if it passes, the task force will be. A thing.
You'll have to identify two people.
Okay, and then how does that? When when does that take place? It takes place after this, after the task force is formed, right?
When does what take place?
People get appointed.
Yeah.
That's uh yeah, that's on you guys, I believe, to do that. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Uh if you move signify by saying.
Oh, yeah.
We were in the discussion.
Yeah, it's been made.
Okay.
Correct.
Aye, everybody.
Okay, so so.
We need to.
Put it up again.
Yeah, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye, that is unanimous.
It's Steve.
No.
Do we need to designate?
We need to be on it first.
I was in the side room, so I could hear the discussion finish.
We need to pick the people though, John.
I think that we can do that without, I mean, without having to have Steve step out.
No. No, I just wanted to check.
Okay.
Yes, not holding.
I would be interested in being on the task force.
Okay. So there will be two council members. You've expressed interest.
I'm good.
Okay. Uh and Tammy has expressed expressed interest in it. So. Is that something we need to warn? We're just appointing them.
Sounds good. We'll note it. Ten minutes.
Tammy and Katie. Moving the two council members.
Well, I'll notice my attorney contact. More work.
I know.
All right, great. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, by sheer reasons. That brings us to eight point two. Which is a consideration of resolution approving the new recreation coordinator job description.
So this was um budgeted. Mister Chair, uh budgeted for this year, I believe, and a couple of months or a few months ahead of uh. Maybe it was April. Uh and uh we have seen uh some significant savings in uh salaries in other places. Considering the jump ahead um. In the parks and bracket, the the increased expected. Attendance and programming uh. We decided to try to get the that secondary twenty five hour week person in in the job job description attached. Uh in as soon as possible and um. Bruce White obviously uh agrees, our our director and supports that.
Is there any discussion? I'm glad that we're getting this moving forward and obviously all the successes that councilman you checked and said Bruce and their group have been doing this will be in addition to. Help continue that poor momentum, so.
Yes, Mike and Lisa did like the groundwork on this long before I got here, so this was all crammed up prior to me getting here, so they did great work with it. Amber's.
Alright, if I think so, I'll introduce a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in point two.
I'll make that motion.
Very second.
Seconding.
Like also Uba. Always in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, that brings us to eight point three, which is quite a serious. Vacancies, municipal boards and commissions, we have none, but obviously with the audience or. Those around the diet or family, if they want to apply, go to vacancies at all in C T dot gov. A lot of great boards there and a good civic service to the town. And nine is old business, which we have none. So item ten is the report of the town manager.
Great, uh thank you so much. Um I'll start out in human resources. Um. Uh you you can see we're gonna move to hire the part time uh recreation director. Thank you very much for the approval. Uh we're gonna be human services uh director. Uh assistant human services director job is being filled currently by uh Mister Wilkinson uh putting together the posting and getting that out. Uh as a aside to that, um. In regards to um succession or should we need, should Mike Wilkinson not be able to come to work? We're starting to train Sarah. Beth uh Nivison on some of the H R uh tasks and duties that Mike um shoulders the entire load of, so. Uh Sarah's gonna start taking uh some classes, inexpensive classes to start learning that stuff and Mike's gonna also start um slowly feeding her um. Instruction on how to do some of the H R uh responsibilities in in regards to succession. Um in in regards to uh ordinance sixty one, I've made that one of my goals um. Personally, moving forward to get that addressed. I have an email from Jason Lawrence, if you don't mind me uh reading it and. When asked the status of uh about regarding uh ordinance sixty. Uh good morning, I've been in discussion with our vendor to ensure any changes we wanted to make were programmable. I have confirmed that there should not be any issues based on what I have proposed, and that is what is meant. That is what is the most important to the assessor's office. However, it will be a unique program to town. That is that is a. As it is a lo- local option, which means I do not, I do expect minor issues before it's completed. The grand list is getting my full attention at the moment, but. The local elderly program is a high priority. Um beyond that, I intend to uh engage um former councilman um. Bob Rubino. In assisting uh or advising uh us on how to move forward. He has some great ideas. Um he's he's, you know, I I spoke to him maybe week two or three here regarding the program. He's away now. Uh Sarah Beth's gonna. Uh help uh guide all of us along and keep it on track uh moving forward, so. Uh that's the goal in regards to uh ordinance sixty out of the assessor's office. Um. Village package store took a hit from a minivan. It was pretty significant um in regards structurally. There is, there is, there exists the possibility that um based on the hit in in theory, the. There could be a collapse and someone could get injured in there. Our building inspector and fire marshal are working closely with the owner to get it up uh as soon as possible and get an engineer in there to include a temporary. Uh fix while the permanent fix uh is underway. Uh the incident happened, saving a step in the future. When it happened, everyone responded, myself, fire chief. Fire marshal, building inspector, uh state police and the fire department. Um. The in that of the gym in buildings is assisting, obviously, heavily with the uh permitting around the new firehouse and some of the things that need to get done there. Lot of people still applying um for uh the. Fuel benefit, the the energy assistance. I know you had asked about that last time. Did we run out of money last uh council meeting um councilman Con? I asked the uh. Human services about that. They said. No, the program's still going. There's still funding. Most likely what that person had is either they had expended their amount of benefit available to them or were not qualified for a certain amount of benefit, and that's. Why they may have misinterpreted that information, but the program's still going strong. Um and they're doing a great job of a lot of people out of the um human services. In finance, our audit is done. Uh the report was submitted and was also submitted to the G F O A Audit Award Program. Well, Lisa did an excellent job. Um we had um. Good findings here in the town uh on our end of things. Uh. Our youth services, there's there's gonna be for the um J R B, a new chair appointed. I'm gonna meet with her. She owns the inn down here. Her name escapes me for a second. Um.
Lisa J Lewis.
That's the one. Uh so uh as soon as she's been available, I'm gonna meet up with her. We've been in conversation on email. I look forward to great things. Uh continuing uh out of that, because Maureen did an excellent job with it. The soccer field repairs are going on as we've been in discussion um. For many reasons, we did, we needed to move forward with it uh at this point. Uh D P W's handling that at a at a significant uh lower cost and hiring out to do it. And finally, lastly, we have the red warrant and blue. I invite everybody as I invite, as we've invited all of our um commissions and. Um all our clergy in town, just everyone that we could think of, we're trying to invite to this. It's just a feel good event. I look forward to it. Uh and it's an event to really help our um food pantry as well. The Boy Scouts will be assisting. Uh with the collection of the food, so I look forward to it. I will absolutely be there. I hope everyone in town uh showed up.
That's great.
That's it.
One quick question, uh the Tullan Meadows condo complex, do we know the severity of the or the buildings that are impacted from the crumbling foundation issue? Is it something that they're gonna?
Out of the assessor, no, I.
Yeah.
Are you talking about a financial number on the on the tax?
Oh, no, 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 just in terms of like how quickly they might be replaced or it's.
Only one was in the highest of, I believe, the higher priority. The other ones were low.
Okay.
If that's what you're asking.
Yeah, yeah, okay. No, we'll figure out the the impact of the grand list at a later time. I'm sure Jason is working on the diligent. Are there any other questions from council which are regarding the town manager report? All right, that brings us to item eleven, which is adoption of minutes. Identity and a motion to approve the minutes as outlined in eleven point one.
So move.
So move by Council Lu Bu, seconded by Council, Council Murray. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
That is unanimous. Item twelve is correspondence to.
Yes, I have three emails. Like email, sorry. Uh one regarding crossfarms, which uh. Brian mentioned, uh one regarding charging stations and another regarding gas burning stoves.
All right, thank you.
No calls to John?
No, no spam, I don't think. It's gotten better.
Yeah, a lot of.
So that brings us to item thirteen, chairperson's report. Uh chair hours last Wednesday. It'll be on Wednesdays at least through May. Um did have Chairman Powell from the P C C show up. We talked about the uh. Multi board and commission uh open town hall is interested, so we're gonna try and connect with the other boards and commissions. To try and set a date or time to allow representatives from each group without having forum, be able to assemble. In a central area to meet with the public and answer any questions. We're gonna try and move forward with that. Otherwise, that's it for me to report. Actually, there was a crock meeting that was supposed to be yesterday and that was canceled, so that. And fourteen communication petitions from council members. Okay, seeing none. Okay. Seeing that, I'll move to uh fifteen, which is publicly listed for public participation on any subject of jurisdiction of the town council. With a three minute limit. Uh if you're in the audience, you can uh reach the podium and say your name and address. If you're on Zoom, you can hit star nine or the raise hand function. I think technically Claude, I beat you to the punch. I'm gonna let Ms. Morehouse go first.
All right, thank you. Claude Morehouse, eighty nine Merlow Way. I just have one question um regarding the Meadows. You said that there was one. Section that was a high priority. Could you share that, which section that is?
I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head, Claude. This is uncatchable conversation with the assessor. I believe one was higher than the rest, but none of them were uh. I don't know which one it was. I wish I can, but. I'm happy to provide that to you tomorrow when I get in front of the assessor.
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate that. Um my daughter lives there. I was just wondering. Thank you.
Thank you, Claude.
Did you, are you wondering why I can't? George Elrich, thirty six, Fish and Game Road. I just a couple of quick ones uh. One on that, supposedly the federal government gave out another twenty million for the uh fuel aid and all that kind of stuff, feeding well. And I was wondering, people that already applied, are they gonna be able to, here was the limit, how much they could get? Are they all gonna, is that limit getting raised up?
I, our human services director is not with us here, but I'm happy to connect with you um and put you in contact with her first thing tomorrow morning, sir. If you want to. And share you my cell phone number or my email, whichever you prefer. Uh or come right down to Fishing Game Road and say hi and be like.
Okay. Right across from the game.
I know where it is.
Yeah, uh see another one, uh. Uh this the salt stuff, I mean, my father worked for the town for fifty years and salt and sand was a big thing. Fifty years ago. We've known that it's been polluting wells for fifty years and why we've not gone back to a mixture. Back then, the most he was, they were allowed was supposedly a ten percent mix of salt. And then they boosted it up to twenty five and then all of a sudden, a number of years ago, the sand went away. I understand you gotta sweep it, but sand costs less than salt and we sweep the roads anyways. Uh if you have a mixture. The salt works and then the sand gives you the grit, so it works together. So I think we should really cut back anymore. Uh salt, those kind of things that. They go on the highway.
Mister Chair, can I respond? My intent was to do it this year. Go back to the mixture of Coventry doesn't.
Yes.
Uh it's a big, a bit of a heavier lift with D P W, uh but that's something I will explore heavily. Uh next year, there's debating sciences on which is more effective. Uh there's also research going on as uh town. Were uh implored by the state, I believe. I don't know the exact uh language that was used. Towns were implored by the state to go to just salt. Um which I'm I'm certain would be a matter of legality that we'll address uh down the road. Uh but certainly I embrace that. We have uh used our funds to buy a vacuum truck um to in in aggressively clean out uh. A lot of the storm drains and also should we switch to sand? We have the sweeper trucks. Uh to pull that out, so that's the direction we're heading, heading in. Thank you for supporting that.
When turn our next meeting with the joint meeting with the school board.
That I believe on the budget schedule is in. When I say late February, early March, I think the twenty third, I'll double check. Yeah, for the budget schedule.
The joint meeting?
Yep, Thursday, February twenty third, the manager will convene a joint meeting between the council and the board of that. The recommendations and suggestions for the consolidation of non-education services. Um and then also be discussion of the board of education's overall budget, so it'll be at the end of February.
Okay. And just one other thing that's always kind of bugged me. Who owns the Little Bay Road in front of the post office? Why is it we fix all the other roads in town? Isn't that belong to, does it belong to the post office, the package store? There's little road that just patched and patched and patched, it's like.
That's got.
Oh, is that um are you speaking of um?
The process goes in front of the post office and the package store.
I wouldn't know for certain. It might be something that you'd have to ask by the manager's office to verify with um the assessors, but my assumption is the package store probably owns.
Yeah.
The parking lot and the three way, the three way between the senior center and and those.
We didn't even own the road.
Yeah, so.
That's a state road.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the state road.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'd almost guarantee that that's well off of our frontage too.
Okay.
But I'm happy to, I gotta get you with.
So it's not a not a town road, no.
No.
That might be worth looking into. I I did speak with the owners of the package store about a year ago because there was an issue with that lot. And and they were under the impression that that was not their their property, so I think probably. Maybe worth taking. Could be worth taking.
It always seemed to me like kind of an embarrassment to the town every time you leave the post office, you're, you're bouncing down the road trying to get to a main road again.
I'll get you the date, there's even that stop sign when you make the end of it.
Yeah. It must be for like, you know, people crawling or something. Okay, so. Brian, would you like my, my phone number, or whatever?
How much longer you think the meeting's gonna last, sir?
I think we should be good, but I mean, I would say if you want to take the phone, right, obviously, it's private information.
Yeah, I don't want to take it out of the record.
Thank you, George.
Thank you. Good seeing you back here.
Yeah.
I had to take care of.
Alright, so Robert DeRoy.
Good, good evening, this is Robert DeRoy at ninety two Merlot Way. Dealing with the, the, the well contamination issue, and. I would echo what the gentleman had said about the road treatment. I think the, the chemical that they're using. Although it may be effective when it contaminates wells, it should be abandoned like immediately, so. Any, any help with going back to a sand salt mix, which we had years ago? And we had drinkable water then as well, so. And then next, I, I appreciate the fact that there's gonna be a task force, but. I do want to express my frustration with the, the response to this issue. That we've been dealing with for seven years relative to the water. And I would really like to feel that there's a sense of urgency. From our, our town council, you know, you guys, your responsibility is to represent. The people of the town and provide adequate services, and we have a big problem here. It's not crumbling foundations, but it's, it's close to crumbling foundations, and. We, we need help, and. We need some urgency in this, it just seems like we're getting nowhere. So I hope that this task force does. Does get us moving in the right direction soon, so I look forward to. The initial meetings that are happening, and then hopefully some participation for the, from the people that are affected, because. I think that's the only way to, to give it a kick in the rear end. And and help, help the people and with drinkable water. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Alright, is there any other public participation? Alright, seeing none, that brings us to item sixteen, adjournment, I would obtain a motion to adjourn at seven fifty four P M. So by councillor Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Like by councillor Luba, all was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone, have a great night.